...of the Louisiana County Board of Supervisors to order, Mr. Barla.
I move that we convene in closed session pursuant to the following subsections of Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711. One, in accordance with Section 2.2, 3711, a three discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public use or the disposition of publicly held real property in the Kukui District and Mineral District where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And two, in accordance with Section 2.2, 3711, a eight consultation legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second. Improperly moved, and secondly, we go into closed sessions. Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes, we're in closed session.
Call the meeting back to order.
Mr. Chairman, move to go back into open session.
Aye.
Improperly moved in second that we go back into open session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I will now pull members to certify that the best of your knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and is identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened were discussed and considered by the board. If any member believes that the board varied from the purposes stated for the closed meeting, please state so in the reason prior to casting your vote. Mr. McCotter.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Williams. Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session and certified. This is the Monday, November 17th, 2025, meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to welcome those of you who are here in the public meeting room and those that are joining us online. We will start this meeting, as we do every meeting, with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand. Miss Christian, Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your blessings upon this meeting. We ask for your guidance and your wisdom as we conduct the business of the people of Louisa County. Lord, we thank you for this season that we're in. We thank you for this Thanksgiving season as a nation, as an estate, and as a county. We have so much to be thankful for, and we continue to thank you for your blessings. We ask that you would protect those that protect us both near and far and continue to keep them safe and continue to keep the people of the United States safe and the people of Louisa County. We pray all this in Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the first item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend the agenda with a motion, the count of December 15th, for the other meeting.
All right, we'll put that as number five under New Business Action Items. Amend the 2025 Board of Supervisor Meeting Schedule. Is there any other changes?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to amend the agenda as well and just remove under New Business Action Items, item number three.
Any other changes to the agenda?
Which one was that?
Number three.
Three.
Request for Louisa County, print and map.
All right, is there a motion for the?
So moved.
Improperly moved in second that we approve the modified agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved in second that we approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved in second that we approve the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Improperly moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We do have a recognition tonight. Mr. Goodwin, a recognition honoring the life and service of Gloria Lane.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think we have a number of representatives of Ms. Lane's family, and I would ask that you will come forward. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, this is a resolution posthumously honoring the life and service of Gloria G. Lane, whereas Gloria G. Lane was a proud resident of Louisa County and a valued member of the community whose life was marked by dedication, service, and a deep love for others. And whereas Mrs. Lane graduated from Louisa County High School in the class of 1961 and began her career serving the public through positions with the Department of Motor Vehicles, Tall with the Department of Motor Vehicles, Tallheimers, and later the Louisa County Treasurer's Office. And whereas in two thousand, Mrs. Lane became the first woman ever elected to serve as Treasurer of Louisa County, a position she held with distinction for three terms before retiring in two thousand and eleven. And whereas throughout her years of public service, Mrs. Lane was known for her professionalism, attention to detail, and unwavering commitment to the citizens of Louisa. And whereas Mrs. Lane earned the respect and the admiration of her colleagues, peers, and the many citizens she served through her fairness, integrity, and willingness to assist anyone in need. And whereas she took great pride in her work and in serving her community with dedication and humility, always striving to ensure the Treasurer's Office operated with accuracy, accountability, and compassion. And whereas beyond her official duties, Mrs. Lane will be fondly remembered for her kindness, generosity, and lively spirit, which brought warmth and joy to all her newer. And whereas she especially cherished time spent with her family and friends, sharing laughter, conversation, and her love for dancing. Now therefore be it resolved that the Louisa County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes, appreciates, and honors the life and service of Gloria G. Lane, whose contributions have left a lasting impact on Louisa County and whose legacy of dedication and compassion will long be remembered. Supervisor Williams? On behalf of the board, we'd like to present this resolution to your family, your mother.
Like to present this on. Hello? It is on? Okay. Like to present this on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. The Jackson District lost a wonderful citizen as well, somebody who was just a great citizen, good for the community, and just an all-around great person. We certainly do share in your loss, but we'd like to recognize her tonight and look at a picture with that. So thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment period is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any subject that is not a public hearing. We don't have any public hearings this evening. When I call your name, if you wish to speak, come to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to talk on any subject. I'll give you a fifteen-second warning. When you do introduce yourself, just give your name and your voting district. The first card I have is Keenan, Dakota. You're good? Okay, perfect. Second is Brad, I think it's Curly. You get that right? Good.
Good evening and thank you for this ability to speak here for a moment. My name is Brad Curly. I live over at Lake Anna. I actually live in Spotsy County, although all our volunteer work is over here in Louisa at the food bank and Ace and other places like that. I just wanted to make a comment about the kinetic multisports, the triathlon folks. I'm going to have a presentation for you later. I've done about two hundred and seventy-three races. I race a lot and these are some of the best-run races that I've ever done. He just runs a really, really nice race. They do a lot of volunteers that they have at their races, from the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. It's a chance for them to do community service. It's a very positive thing. This past August, in Nationals, which were held in Milwaukee, USAT, which is the governing body of triathlons in the whole country, they awarded the Race Director of the Year and they awarded it to that guy sitting back there who's going to talk to you later. And it's quite an honor to do that of all the companies in the thing and you should just be honored that they do races in your backyard. It's something that you could really promote in your advertising and things like that. It's just a super, super thing to have in your background. So just a very positive thing. So thank you for your.
Thank you, sir. Next card I have is Vicki Hart.
There it goes. Vicki Hart, town of Louisa, three-eleven Club Road, Louisa, Virginia. I came to you to talk to you today about the construction traffic that's been going through the town of Louisa with the recent growth in construction. The shutdown we had of Main Street was due to a construction truck which broke the riser on the manhole. It was not a sinkhole, as was previously reported. The truck traffic that's coming in through town, the road is not built to meet that and that's what caused the failure and caused us to have to shut the road down. It will happen again because it was, it's still not built for that. We did have night shift do the repair work because that's about the only time you can shut down Main Street in Louisa. But it was an issue. It was caused by construction equipment and it's more than likely going to happen again if all that traffic keeps coming through the town of Louisa. And that's it. And we would appreciate it if you could contact with VDOT and possibly someone from the board, meet with VDOT to talk about the damage to our roads that this traffic is causing. Thank you.
I don't have any other cards. Is there anyone else? Yes, yes, sir. Could you grab his card? Thank you.
Terry Zamski, Mineral District. I live on Cannon Road and I see where you're going to discuss possibly an evaluation for through truck traffic through there. Yeah, we don't need any big trucks going down through that road with those S-curves on each end. It's bad enough meeting just normal traffic on that road, even just regular through traffic. But if you could have VDOT also come out there and look on the edges of the road on the thirty-three end, especially there's washouts from when we had storms back in the spring and early summer. And there's like eight-inch to twelve-inch drop-offs in places right off the edge of the road. They just paved over the gravel when they paved it and then with the storms and that, it's just eaten underneath of that and there's some drop-offs. But we don't need the big truck traffic definitely on Cannon Road. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that we wish to address the board? All right, seeing that, I'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to information discussion items. First is a discussion on road naming and signs. Mr. Coon?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. What you have before you on page twenty-nine and thirty is a memo from Ms. Buckler just describing how we deal with the subdivision, road naming signs for nine-one-one and how other localities use it. What we're asking for is essentially if you would like us to continue investigating this and finding ways to address the cost of the installation and maintenance of the signs, if you would allow staff to move forward with this and bring it up to Planning Commission for their recommendations. And I stand ready to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes, sir.
Just to add a little bit further detail, we're starting to get, you know, as the E-nine-one-one, I'm not sure which, what year E-nine-one-one was implemented in the county, but in the nineties, I believe.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, okay.
I was there.
Thank you. You know, as the signs age, we're starting to have more that are requiring replacement. And really what brought this up is when we get requests to replace them on private roads. You know, does the board want us to replace that? I'm assuming you probably do, but in checking with other counties, we're seeing that everybody kind of handles it differently. Some people require developers to pay for the installation and the maintenance. Some counties do the installation and the maintenance or a split between the two. And so really just seeing if you all either tonight or as we move through this process, do you have any strong feelings on how you would like that set up? We feel a fire EMS and county staff feel like we definitely need the signs even on private lanes. They're an integral part of our dispatch and emergency response system. So keeping them in good condition is important from a staff standpoint. And as Mr. Coon said, we'd like to propose some amendments to the code to clarify that, to make it a little simpler to plan for, maybe even amend the fee schedule so that when people are paying fees and that there's a reasonable reserve there to do some sign maintenance and replacement. In many cases, if you're looking at developers of private subdivisions, you could have a situation where an older subdivision developer is no longer in the picture anymore and where's the funding come from? So anyway, that's the background that brought us to this conversation tonight. It seems like an opportunity to update the code.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir.
I think this is a perfect item and it's something that we should let it come through the channel, through the Planning Commission. Let them work out the details and then it come back to us.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Is the county, so seconds count?
You should.
So seconds count and having to slow down and having damaged signs, which I do see in my district.
Yep.
So it's important that we keep them up. But is there any type of liability for the county if we don't maintain our signs and it slows EMS and fire rescue from finding a house under the E-nine-one-one system? Don't we have due diligence and responsibility to maintain those signs to the highest accord?
I would say we do. The county attorney may want to opine on that.
Yes, we would have our due diligence to maintain.
I thought we did.
Signs that you can read that are, yes.
Because I remember when we were putting the nine-one-one, E-nine-one-one system in and making sure we could not get it up and running until we had every sign in place because of that liability. I remember that time. So we, yeah.
Mr. Williams?
The discussion says road naming. We're not going to rename roads, are we? Doesn't everyone have a name?
I think the only reason that's in there, this is in the road naming section. Okay. There's a lot of specificity in the code to road naming. There might be additional specificity that you or the Planning Commission want to consider with regard to private road naming.
Just the name of the section.
It's in the section with road naming.
Just checking. Every road has a name now, right?
Unless it's a private lane only serving two.
Yeah, anything with.
It could have a name.
It could, yes.
But if it's.
For the purpose of the E-nine-one-one, right now it's only if it's serving three parcels.
Got it.
So if there's no objection, staff would be directed to go ahead and pursue this?
Yes, sir.
Good enough, thank you. Next is a presentation, an update from Kinetic Endeavors on the triathlon. Well, you got quite a, you know, I don't know if you paid that guy or not, but he gave you quite a.
You should, if you didn't.
Yeah, you should.
Brad's great. He races with us a lot. So, yeah. Is there a PowerPoint and video queued up? Yep. All right, let's go ahead since.
I think you have the clickers right there in front of you.
Amazing. Video first? Video first, just because I haven't seen y'all toe the line yet and jump in the water. I just wanted to help share the excitement because, you know, a picture is a thousand words. I felt like a video, ninety seconds, I promise I'll keep it brief.
Is that the whole presentation or just the video?
No, and then I've got a really short PowerPoint.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Yeah, yeah. So if you want to cue the, go ahead and play the video. That'd be great.
Good morning, triathletes and welcome to beautiful Lake Anna for the twenty twenty-five Pleasant Landing Triathlon Festival. And today we hope that you have the race of your life.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to just give you all an update on the race. This year, we had some chilly weather in the spring, so we actually ended up shortening the swim just to keep everyone safe. So we did not have any hypothermia issues. It was like forty-eight degrees and breezy and the water was, I think, in the low sixties. So we ended up shortening the swim. No complaints on that, no hypothermia. You see people go out in full jackets. It was, other than the weather challenges, it was great. This fall, we had Chamber of Commerce Goldilocks weather. I mean, it was, it was perfect, perfect conditions the entire time. In the spring, we had five hundred and fifty athletes, twenty-five states represented. In the fall, we had five hundred and fifty athletes, twenty-eight states. It was the Mid-Atlantic Collegiate Championship, so we had about fifteen schools come and represent. We never had to park buses down there at Pleasant Landing, but we successfully accomplished some bus parking, which was great. Some event history. We first did the event out there at Pleasant Landing back when it was Lake Anna Beach Marina in October of two thousand and six. We secured our first CUP in two thousand and sixteen after a last-minute move for a one-year at Boxley Cove and then we went back to the marina after that. And since then, we've been hosting twice annual events in April and October each year. I guess I should use the clicker. Brief overview, we've got two different distances for the day. We've got an Olympic distance race starting at nine. We have a sprint distance starting at nine-thirty. Each of the distances are about, the first one's a seven-fifty swim or fifteen-hundred-meter swim. Encore support, we've got the Louisa County Sheriff's Office, their Lake Patrol encorese with the jet skis and the boat. We've got Spotsylvania Rescue with their dive team on there. We have a large cohort of lifeguards and kayakers out there just keeping everyone safe. This is a world-class swimming location. I don't know that, if y'all aren't swimmers, I've had two other groups reach out to me this year asking if I could help them connect about doing events at Lake Anna and I pushed them to Lake Anna Beach Marina because they can swim around the peninsula and it's very safe. You can make the courses shallow or as deep as you want. The clarity down there is amazing. The water quality, you know, gets further down the lake, so the water quality is always really good. And I'd love to talk to y'all more about how we can foster those events and plus, you know, being able to swim and then get tacos is definitely, definitely a win. And as you can note, the far corner buoys do leave access for folks that live in that cove to get in and out of that, in and out of that cove. On the bike course, bike course, twelve or twenty-four miles is a twelve-mile loop. Some athletes do that course once, some folks do it twice. We have a lot of support on the bike course. We've got Louisa County Sheriff's Department out there providing traffic control. We've got SKS Traffic doing the signage and the detours. VDOT signs us the permit, the patching the potholes. We've got EMS stationed at the marina. They've got multiple vehicles and a UTV there. We've got motorcycles and mechanics driving the course, looking for issues, enforcing rules of the road, making sure athletes ride right, don't litter, things like that. The course design is really great. It's mostly right-hand turns, which allows traffic to keep flowing smoothly. And then new, I think, two years ago, we started closing that short two hundred and fifty-meter section of Eastham between Greens Corner and Pleasant's View. The run course, three-point-one or six-point-two miles. We exit the marina, run through a short boundary between Dominion Power onto their gravel road, take that down to Greens Corner, down and back on Greens Corner. Athletes do one or two laps of that course. And again, we've got Louisa County and Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department out there providing traffic control cones, enforcing the one-lane road, alternating one-way traffic, water stops out there, roving mountain bike patrols. And we use, again, we use that connecting road between the gravel parking area on that gravel road and the marina as part of the run course and it's dual-purpose, just getting athletes and spectators to and from their cars and for the run course. This is just an overview of the race site proper. You know, the marina's at the top left, the dam's on the far right, and it just kind of gives you an overview of how things flow during the race, if we need to reference that at all. Historical issues, the number one has been parking. The way we've addressed the parking issues, number one, just limiting the number of participants that are there. The permit gives us seven hundred and fifty per day. We purposefully limit that to five fifty just because we don't want to run out of parking. So this year, we had, two-thirds of the gravel road was still open and car-free, so we had plenty of room for late spectators that are coming in so those folks can get parked. The Knights of Columbus out of Louisa, they do the parking for us on race day, both here at the marina and at Lake Anna State Park, the four race days at the state park, and they are fantastic. They are a tremendous asset to the community and we've enjoyed working with them for years. The second major concern that was addressed in the CUP in days gone by was the noise level. We alleviated those concerns just by turning the speakers and then we don't start amplified music until eight-thirty. We do a sound check with a decibel meter and those have been well in line. And again, just pointing the speakers towards the dam has been a major game changer. The traffic concerns from the bike course mainly and the road closures, those have been addressed with the mailers going out and there's the signage, the signage that go out before each event. And everything just has been flowing pretty smoothly. out into, before each event, and everything just has been flowing pretty smoothly. We've had a couple of issues where the, the coning crew will put a road closed sign about a half mile down too far, and then we've finally gotten that, the map updated, so they're putting it at Pleasant's View where the road closure actually is. It's not, you know, it's not coming up, it's right there. That's the road closure. And then, I just wanted to note, we had some feedback on, from some, from some residents. They're no longer full-time residents at the lake, but they still own the, own the house. Linda Robinson was at a lot of these meetings over the past couple of years, and I've just kept in touch with her and just, you know, she seems to be pretty pleased with how the triathlons have, have gone and sees them as an asset to the community. And then this, the right-hand side of that panel is just a note that, that's the, that's the mailer that goes out to everyone's house out there, close to, close to the marina. Community impact from the event, again, I mentioned the Knights of Columbus, they're, they are fantastic. Lake Anna Civic Association also gets a donation. They do a lot with the water quality here at the lake, just doing the testing and just, they also provide some kayak and water safety volunteers for us at the various races. They're, they're also wonderful to work with. Lake Anna Rescue, Troy and Alex Dillard, they provide the EMS support at the event. They've been fantastic to work with. Luisa County High School Athletics, their softball team has come out to assist with, you know, handing out water and doing body marking, athlete check-in. We also raise donations and raise funds for the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, the Special Operations Warrior Foundation throughout our, throughout our season. Some of the economic impact that goes out here, just, you know, overtime, you know, we don't, we don't ask for anything for free. We're more than happy to pay our way, so we pay, we pay overtime to the sheriff's department team that comes out and does share traffic control and on waters, on water support. El Grande Patron, we pay for the food at both the races at the marina and then the four days of racing at Lake Anna State Park, and Manny and his crew have been fantastic to work with over the years. We pay a hosting fee to Pleasant's Landing Marina. We also, there's a number of off-season or shoulder-season lake, lakehouse rentals that occur for the event. I'm trying to track down some additional numbers for that. Those didn't come in in time for me to get them to you for the report, but definitely, you know, we rent lakehouses for our staff every year, and I know there's more folks that do rent lakehouses for, for the event. And we buy a lot of the post-race food. What Manny doesn't provide, the bananas, the ice, things like that at the, at the local food line. And I spoke with Manny on Friday, I said, is there any feedback that you'd like me to pass along? He said, the races are fantastic, and we look forward to them every year. So, I wanted to thanks, thank everyone for your support, for your time, and if there's any questions or concerns that you have that I have not adequately addressed, please do not hesitate to let me know now. In the future, every year, we have to get a DOT permit signed off on by the county administrator. That's also a good, a good checkpoint. Hey, we would like to see this tweak in your traffic control plan. We'd like to see this tweak in your run course or how you sign, sign the event. So, just let me know. You know, it's my goal to make this as smooth as possible for your community. So, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. As Kukui District Representative Ware, Mr. Hawkins, you hold this event.
Yes, sir.
I would like to say you're doing a very good job. I did ask my constituents and in email communication if they had any feedback, and overwhelmingly, their feedback was fine.
Good.
Not, not causing a disturbance. Every now and then you'll get somebody says, it's too loud, but you're going to get that.
Yeah.
And I, as someone who lives, Mrs. Robbins is one of our neighbors, within earshot of the event, it doesn't seem to be very disruptive. Anytime we've had an issue, Mr. Hawkins has addressed it quickly and efficiently. I would ask that in, in the future, perhaps you could give your participants some type of questionnaire that you could get information from them about where they stay, what kind of money they spend, so we can provide that to our tourism people so that we can understand better how to market to this type of event and.
Yeah.
Maybe get more people to stay here and shop here and just, you know, be able to work more closely with you.
Love that.
If you're going to bring 500 people to, 550 people to our area for a weekend, let's maximize the effort.
Hundred percent.
I would ask that you work with the sheriff's department, maybe revisit that with Sheriff, with Sheriff Lowe to make sure that the compensation is adequate. There's a lot of resources that, that are tied up that normally wouldn't be tied up, and I understand you're paying for it, and I appreciate that as you should be. But sometimes when Sheriff Lowe has to call in a favor, he can't call in a favor the next time. So, we have to understand there's not only a physical cost, but there's a, there's a favor cost here, too. These men are on the weekend, sometimes they're off, and they're coming in overtime. They do it willingly, and they are compensated for it. So, if, let's just maybe revisit that with the sheriff. Same with LA RI, make sure that the amount that, the donation to them is, you know, appropriate.
Yes, sir.
For what they're doing, because I understand that they, they too have a lot of assets, you know, that are involved in that.
Yep.
I talked to Troy about that. And lastly, the litter cleanup looks to be going well. You know, every now and then we see a little bit, but I'm, what is the plan for that? Do you do that yourselves, or do you have people that do that?
Yeah, yeah, we go around, we sweep all the intersections, and as we're going out putting out signs, you know, we're picking up, picking up trash, and we go back out to pick up all the signs, you know, if there's anything that looks like a race-related or, or not.
Yeah.
In the back of the truck.
We need all the help we can get, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
And just, as I know, my wife and friend, they set up a hydration station, so we're always supportive and glad you come to the area.
Awesome.
Continue to do the good job that you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate the, the impact you have on Lake Anna and Luisa County. So, all the positive.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to a discussion, which is an update on the East End Tower. Mr. Barlow, you asked us to be on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The, the East End Tower is a critical component of our firing EMS on the east end of the county, and the tower has gone through several delays. Anyway, it was supposed to be operational July the 1st. Since that time, and of course, now it's still not operational, but since that time, I've had some discussion with Lieutenant Lee, and what I am asking now is that the discussion be had with Motorola and those that are involved with the completion of that tower, that we get an update and find out exactly when this is going to be completed and to also move it along as quickly as possible. So, what I would be looking for is some more information back from the powers that be as to when this tower is actually going to go operational.
All right, and I think you've been providing updates chiefly, so if you can continue to provide those updates, Mr. Barlow on the board, we'd be appreciative.
No problem.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Before we move on to new business action items, I did want to recognize, I see that newly-elected mayor of the town of Luisa is here, Mayor Ashley Michael, so thank you and welcome to the board meeting. Congratulations. Move on to new business action items. First is a resolution requesting evaluation of a through truck, a traffic restriction on Route 665 Kenan Road, which is in the Mineral District, and I know we're going to make a slight change to that, Mr. Coon. But I did want to say, I asked this to be put on the board's agenda. I have spent some time with constituents on Kenan Road. I actually went down and sat along Kenan Road last week for not very long, actually probably 20 minutes, but long enough to see some traffic on Kenan Road that I don't think should be on Kenan Road. I've spoke with VDOT, with Mr. Thornton at VDOT. I've spoken with, it seemed to me that the traffic that I saw there was probably construction traffic moving between data center campuses. I'm not 100% positive of that, but it appeared to be. I've spoken with AWS, I've spoken with Clark Construction. They're instructing their vendors not to use Kenan Road as a, as a through truck road, but I do believe that it would be beneficial to have the state look at this. Mr. Thornton seemed to be very optimistic that we could get this one through because there are some options on routing, and Mr. Coon and I were talking a little bit ago, and I know you're going to bring an update, you have it here, that we're also going to add to that Route 605 Willis Prophet Road so that we just don't move them one road down. Mr. Coon?
Yes, sir. So, those of y'all who remember, a couple of years ago, we tried to do this for chalk level and chopping road, and the Transportation Safety Commission requires that we go from point A to point B, and we actually showed the routing that we would suggest. So, in this example, you can see where Kenan Road is, just comes south of Town of Mineral and comes down right where 6 is from 605 Trailer Park. That is the entirety of Kenan Road that we're looking for the through truck restriction. The length of that, it is about 2.55 miles, and what we're actually requesting is that the detour would run them all the way down 522 to 33, and then from 33 to get back to that 6, for 605 Trailer Park, it'd end up being about four miles, 4.58 miles, so we would extend the route just over two miles, which seems reasonable based on what the Transportation Safety Commission has approved before. The only issue that we did have is that if they went down 522 to Willis Prophet, it is 3.19 miles, so it's a little bit less. So, realistically, if the GPS had them going down Kenan, if they keep going down 522 or 33, it would just have them turn on Willis Prophet. So, we probably want to move forward with both of those roads and have them go 522 to 33.
Does anyone have any questions? I, again, I asked for this to be on the board's agenda, and I'd like the board's support in making this recommendation to VDOT, since I can't make a motion if someone.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we also looking at 33? Because I know that there's some concerns when you come out on to 33, not just Kenan Road, but are we also looking at 33 or?
It is a through truck route.
It is. That's a through truck route, but, okay.
Mr. Chairman, do we know, can we anticipate where this truck traffic will go if they can't go where they're going? I know we anticipated they might go to Shannon Hill. I mean, what's the next route they're going to cut through on?
Well, as Mr. Coon just said.
Now, 522.
Two more miles, they're going to just go for the two more miles.
They're taking now.
Yep.
And then, if they come down, we're also asking to have Willis Prophet. More than likely, that would be the next area that they, so that's what we're asking for now, is they take 522 all the way down to 33. And that whole detour, like I said, is only about two-mile detour out of the way. So, VDOT is, last time, I don't remember if it was chopping or chalk level, it was nearly 10 miles or 13 miles, and they didn't feel that that was a reasonable deterrent, detour, but for two miles, just like.
So, what, what we're trying to do here is, is keep trucks on truck routes, which all of those are main.
This map threw me a little bit because I don't think Tavern on the Rail is there.
Tavern on the Rail is not there. Tavern on the Rail is not there. Tavern on the Rail is way off to the right.
I did use Google Maps, so if it's on there, I, no off the ship.
Yeah.
If it's on there, it's got to be right.
Tavern on the Rail doesn't exist.
I don't know if it's right, but.
That's true.
That's the Tavern on the Rail Barn Venue and Catering. That does, that does exist.
Which is in Kukui District.
It is.
All right, back to, back to this. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next is a resolution approving the Tourism Advisory Committee's recommendation for the Luisa County Fairs Tourism Support Request, and I don't know who's giving this presentation.
Cindy is.
Oh, there's Mrs. King.
Says so, right here.
My mind doesn't say it.
Good evening. Just to speak a little bit to this resolution on the Tourism Advisory Committee's recommendation. So, this is an increase over last year's fair request for the event. So, last year, the fair requested, well, they requested more than we actually recommended, and the board approved. So, last year, the board approved that the fair receive 20,000 for musical acts and 6,699 for advertising, and their advertising was actually supplemented with a Virginia Tourism Grant as well. This year, you do see that it is increased to recommended 54,450. This would cover security, rentals, marketing, trams, gate administration, and an increase for musical acts. The fair did request 131,867.25 this year, so they really do, obviously, they're, they're trying to grow. The staff felt and the committee felt that that might be a little bit too much growth too soon. I mean, anyone that attended the fair this year saw that there was, you know, issues with parking, like there, there really was no parking, like almost immediately, like, and it was great. I mean, the, the fair was a success, and that's exactly what we intended, but we would think that we need to work through some of these issues and try and figure that out. But we do think that, you know, like, we're talking about a transit system, and that was part of this request where we need to build that in. So, that was part of it, and the increased amount for the musical acts, we do think that that does make sense as well. So, last year, you know, the board did approve the 20,000 for musical acts, and I did kind of help make calls because they, you know, they told us when they made the request, they were like, we're kind of late in the game to get musical acts, and it was kind of funny because it, you know, it didn't seem like they were late in the game, but when I started trying to help make calls, everyone said we were late, and we kind of got a lot of clicks where it was like, oh, you're calling awfully late, you don't really have a big budget for this. So, it kind of does make sense to get a little bit of a bigger budget. We did, you know, luck out, we had a, you know, a great band this past year, but adding a little bit more to that budget, I think, you know, we can, you know, add some, you know, great musical acts for this upcoming year and help grow the event even more for this upcoming year and grow those overnight stays that we're looking to do. And then, of course, I know the board knows this, but for anybody that's watching or listening now, this is using TOT money, that Transit Occupancy Tax money that legislation requires that goes back into tourism. So, this isn't just using our, our residents' taxpayer money just to throw a big party.
Any questions for Mrs. King?
I got it.
Mr. Barlow.
In reading through this, and I think you just mentioned it, the request was for 131,867.25, but I think the Tourism Advisor Committee is recommending 54,000.
Correct.
Which is well over double what it was last year.
Correct.
Okay, and just my observation, it seems to me we're getting, gone away from what was the Ag Fair to now Entertainment County Fair.
So, the Ag Fair, I don't know if Whitney's here. She is not. So, the Ag Fair has done a lot, or the Luisa County Fairs, they've kind of rebranded themselves. They've done a lot of talking to other counties. I know Rockingham County is one of the, the counties that they've spoken to a lot, and they've done a lot of, I guess there's a county association, County Fair Association that they're a part of. So, they've done a lot of working with other counties to kind of model themselves after that. So, that is part of it, where agriculture is, I think, always going to be the center of the Ag Fair or the Luisa County Fair, but I think that they are trying to model themselves after, you know, other successful fairs.
Any other question? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Second.
Being promptly moved in second that we approve this resolution, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-1. Thank you, ma'am. Next is a resolution authorizing a budget supplement to the Luisa County Airport for the Virginia Department of Aviation grant funding received for fuel tank relocation capital project. Mr. Goodwin.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, bear with me as I'm doing this for Ms. Colvin, but the airport did receive state grant, state grant funding totaling a little over $145,000 from the Virginia Department of Aviation for a fuel tank relocation project, and 72,000 of the state grant funding was previously appropriated by the board in September of last year. So, this is for the remaining 73,000 and change of the state funding and the local match, 71,445. They were not included in the 26 budget, as we don't typically do that for grants, and would need to be appropriated at this time. So, the resolution lists those details, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any question?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this resolution, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is an amendment to the 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule, which I believe, Mr. Barnes, you said would cancel the December 15th meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved in second that we amend the 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we're up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
I, I'll just talk for, about JABA. JABA had their board meeting today, and they put together a really comprehensive book about everything that they do, board members, the activities they do in each county. And it's just, it's a really interesting read. I don't believe they have it online. If anyone's interested in borrowing this or having this, they're more than welcome to. They went through it with us, and I just think as budget season comes, it might be important that we kind of refamiliarize ourselves with it as we make decisions. And so they put a lot of effort into this book, I have to say. I was pretty impressed with it.
All right. Anybody else? Any other reports? Move on to board appointments. I don't have any board appointments. Do we? We do? Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Karen Coleman to the Commission on Aging as the Mineral District.
Oh, that's actually mine, isn't it? I just don't have it here. Yes, I can't make a motion anyway. So, so the deputy clerk has made a motion. Now, we're on to expanding the, the voting ranks of the board. Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That was an inside joke, but it was funny to ask.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I could just add one thing, Ms. Coleman was at our November meeting. I think she's going to be a fantastic addition to the Commission on Aging, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, I spoke with her. She actually lives, like, when the leaves are off, I can see her house from my house.
I was surprised, but she shared that with us.
Yeah, I am, too.
Most of your neighbors.
Most of my neighbors don't talk about it. Yeah, most of them have moved. Next is the county administrator's report. Mr. Goodwin.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll be brief. Much of what we're working on is included elsewhere on the agenda, but the monthly reports for the month of October are included in great detail in my report. Also, in a report, the staff are working on a policy for doing iPaws alerts directly. So iPaws replaced is a statewide alerting system, and specifically in Luisa, it's, it's used for, for various types of alerts, hopefully, very rarely if ever, but including replacing the sirens that North Anna used to use to do alerting. In prior years, we had to coordinate, or previous to this, we've had to coordinate with the state to do alerting through them, which can be a little bit time-consuming when you're going through that process. And so we're working on our own policy to be able to do iPaws alerts directly from the county after being qualified to do so, qualified to do so by the state. So that would be an update to the county's emergency operations plan that will be coming to you soon for consideration. Also, we're getting close to the holidays. Just a few things to make sure on your calendar and that you tell your constituents about. The Department of Human Services has an angel tree up, and this year, we're allowing online signups. If folks want to adopt and support children and families who are in need this season, please encourage them to visit the department or to check out our, our online reservation system where they can sign up to do that and make sure that you and your constituents attend the Christmas tree lighting on the evening of December the 5th, the parade on Saturday the 6th, and breakfast with Santa on Saturday the 13th. That concludes my prepared remarks.
Any questions for Mr. Goodwin? Mr. Barnes?
So move.
Second.
Improperly moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.